Come out of closed session, please.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of coming out of closed session, show by raising your right hand.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion based on our closed session. I'd like to make a motion that we extend Dr. Dunsmore's contract through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. His current contract is.
All right, we have a motion stating to extend Dr. Dunsmore's contract through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And a second. Is there any discussion? All right, yes.
I don't want to make a comment if I may. I just, I really feel like this is putting the board in a situation of being leveraged to make a decision in a reactionary way based on the process of Dr. Dunsmore putting an application in in the school system for a board. As a result of that, I feel like we would be premature in voting on this. It's even been suggested that we possibly have a retreat and discuss expectations for the future of our school system. And then possibly vote on extension at a later time. I feel more comfortable in doing that. Than almost being forced to make a decision. He does still have two years on his contract here. But I think that we need to sit down and discuss the future. I think he's done an excellent job with working with the county commissioners and the county as far as our building projects and that type of thing. And we certainly need him to be a player in that. But at the same time, we're being put in a situation where we've been leveraged to extend the contract in the form of now they were sitting there and talking to him about expectations and things like that. So that's all the comment that I have.
Yes.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would also like to echo the sentiments of Mr. Pritch. And I think we are, would be a little bit more premature. I think it would be to our best benefit to wait to determine what's the outcome of that superintendent's decision in Doolittle County. And then once that is, that has been firmed up, it would be more appropriate for us to come back and then discuss any type of contract.
If there's no other discussion, are we ready for the vote? All in favor of extending Dr. Dunsmore's contract through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one? And may I make an indication that that timeframe was set so it would end on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one? So we would stay in line with the contract. All in favor indicate by showing raising your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now. Do I have to?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the special call meeting.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, all in favor? Show by showing raising your right hand. Thank you. Okay, now we go into the budget board session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before Dr. Loeb starts, as most of you are aware, we had presented a lot of information to county commissioners this year. They met Tuesday to lay out their budget as far as what the schools go. They have approved four additional SROs for next year. They have also approved a half a percent increase to the certified supplement across the entire district. As most of you are aware, we had presented some informations that would look at the low performing or high poverty needs schools. That was taken into account. They are still in the process of laying our safety and security requests. As most everybody's aware, the governor is proposing a rather large supplement for funding source for safety and security in schools. And they're waiting to see what's going to come of that. As well as, I have some other information on some security initiatives that we're doing in-house. I'm not speaking too soon. The other area that they're still under conversation with is the paving. We had presented what we needed rolling it out over a five-year period. So they are still looking at that. Right now, they are looking at an increase in the property taxes of just shy of three percent. The biggest issue with that was to address the funding formula for the low wealth supplement. They did approve to pay any shortfalls that the state doesn't come up with in the low wealth supplement. This year, it's not quite the $2 million that we lost last year. The state has some funding they're putting into it similar to last year. They asked the county to split that figure, and I believe the state's putting in $800,000 and the county is putting in $800,000. That's what has been discussed up to this point. If there's anything additional, I spoke with Mr. Honeycutt yesterday that we were going to be giving this board an update today. If there's anything additional that we would like to share or add to that, he and I are meeting Monday to go over where they're at and what they're doing. The other piece of this, I did provide city manager Scott Stevens our formula that we came up with when we were looking at the high poverty or low performing schools, asking to be on the city agenda, which I have not been asked to present yet. I did speak with the mayor yesterday that the school system or the school buildings within the city, that they would fund a supplement increase for the certified and classified staff at Goldsboro High School, Dillard, North Drive. Carver Heights, I know I was missing one, I apologize. So we gave them the numbers for a half cent, half a percent increase as well as a full percent increase. I'm hopeful they're going to have that at the next city council budget, and I will be able to report back on that. And then the only other, is there any questions on that or anything anybody would like to add? I mean, that's.
I would like for you to start over, because I missed it all.
Oh, okay.
Unless you got enough.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Three percent increase in taxes, if that happens, that would put us in a position where we wouldn't lose $2 million.
We're hoping, again, that, that.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, so that formula.
This year is done.
This year done. And if they do that for next year, it'll be for the following year. Now, they did adjust it some last year. That formula is based on what a county's ability is to put funding in as opposed to what the state's giving. So it takes into account property taxes, the amount of revenue they generate through taxes and sales tax. So every year that can readjust and reset, obviously, if the sales tax goes up. That's where the biggest change is going to be seen.
That was the blind spot, what it was.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-two. The way the state looks at that, if the county's tax rate is low enough, it means that the county is wealthy enough that they don't have to have so desperately, you're talking about low wealth. So since, and if those things were the commissioners, their strong desire to lower taxes actually, they stepped on a stone hole, in other words. Dr. Dunsmore, you sent us out this sheet that was sent out to us about, I guess, the local budget recommendations. So I was checking those things off. Now, they did make arrangements for the low wealth money to be replaced.
Yes, so that's.
They're going to do it or hold this harmless for anything that the state.
We're not going to lose anything. So when they went down and met with our state elected officials, because the issue, as most of you are aware, is that ADM number that would hold everybody harmless. They have agreed that that's going to be a discussion topic in this year's budget at the state level. But they agreed, the state's going to fund 50% of the shortfall, the county agreed to make up the difference.
And they're going to give us a half a percent certified staff stuff?
Yes.
Okay, this year.
Yes.
But that, the plan is for five years, but obviously, they're only talking about the tax that over this year.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we had, we had kind of, what I had done with that, Mr. Flowers, was a wish list. As we've been talking about, obviously, a lot of that is facilities pieces. One of the things we're working on as a result of the last facilities meeting is what's our threshold that's a large capital outlay as opposed to a small capital outlay, as you're aware. And they only give us $2 million for small capital. And I had shared with Mr. Honeycutt and I had brought this forward to the commissioners that we were going to develop that threshold. And that my hope is that every year, if we have large capital outlay projects, that they will be on the commissioner's budget agenda for vote.
Now, you said that on the safety and security, I think you asked for $650,000. That they have not completely committed on that, but have not denied it. That's somewhat in the works, is that what?
He had told me he felt very confident we were going to get something. He just wasn't.
All right.
And what was that six?
Yeah, Ms. Burdich. No, you go ahead. You wanted to hear the whole thing. I didn't clarify all the things, but I didn't, yeah.
What would that be specifically for, that money for safety?
Yeah, so what Mr. Stalls and his crew, mainly upgrading our cameras to digital, high resolution cameras, swipe cards. Now, the swipe card and door entry and access is probably not as hard fast as I would like because a lot of our doors and our aging buildings, the whole framework, the whole door would have to be replaced. So we're going to have to get some companies to come out and look at that and get us a little bit more price on that. I'm also going to be handing out some information that will have all of our buildings mapped electronically and computerized as an early warning system. We're going to do that out of our own funds. Because I think this is a priority that we should have done. I'm encouraged from talking to Mr. Honeycutt, we're going to get some help with safety and security. I just don't know exactly.
How much?
It will not be part of the $2 million. Okay, it'll be separate?
It'll be separate. I had asked for it as a separate line item, because that way we can track exactly what we put in and show we use the money for what we ask.
And the high poverty schools, the city's going to help us in that, is that?
We're, I have a formal request in, they have the numbers.
Oh, I see the request is.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Henderson?
I have a few questions about the safety and security as well. In Governor Cooper's budget, isn't he allocating funds for safety and security? Would that actually come to us or would that actually come to the county?
If that's what they're waiting to see, I don't know how that's going to be disseminated or, obviously, it hasn't been voted on yet. But that was part of the discussion. He had asked if I knew how that was going to be spread out. I don't know the answer to that until the House and Senate vote. I'm assuming they're going to put something similar in their project.
Okay, and the SRO, the county commissioners looking for that to come out of their budget while it's whatever is coming from the.
Yes, we have a contract for our SROs with the county. They added four additional positions, so that's funded through them.
Okay, now, my question would be, if the state decides that they are going to spend money and it is line item for SRO, what happens to that money? Are we reimbursing the county for money that they have already put forward? Or would we be allowed to use that money for?
Actually, the county SRO money, they put that in, it flows through our budget. So it's shown on our spreadsheets, not the county's.
So the county gives us the money for the SROs?
I would go hat in hand and say, look, we got this extra money now, may I use it to get swipe cards or camera upgrades?
Okay. The other, the other thing, and I know that there has been an agreement on this half percent certified staff supplement. I think that we, as advocates for teachers and all, should be asking for more. I think that we need to come out and tell them that our teachers deserve more than half a percent. Knowing already that they have agreed to a half a percent, we need to put a bargaining chip out there for them. So I would like to, and I know you said a one, you had said one percent five.
What the request was, it was put in, was for a five-year period. We gave them the numbers, two and a half, half a percent each of those five years, which would be a two and a half total increase. And we also put a full percent in over a five-year period, which would be a five percent increase.
They upgraded to nine?
Yes, sir.
What is Johnson County's?
They're thirteen and a half now, and so they have a three-year plan that's rolling out. And I believe next year is either a percent or a percent and a half.
And they're how much now?
Thirteen point five.
We're at six?
Yes, sir. Or six and a half, excuse me.
I think we need to be advocating a little bit more for our teachers and that regard.
The other thing that we're looking into, as you're aware, we put the restart tag on Goldsboro High School, which gives us funding flexibility. So that's how we were paying those stipends to Goldsboro High School, because we had money we would otherwise have to revert back to the state we used for that. So we're looking into the option of maybe doing restarts for some of our low performing and high poverty schools so we can put a similar structure in place on our.
On the line out, I don't know exactly what you submitted at the end. But on these line out, it looked pretty small, like paving and things like that. Did they specify anything on any of that or just?
Just the paving right now is still under discussion.
Just sort of in the.
Yeah, that was more or less a, you know, wish list that I was trying to show him that's what's on the horizon. As you know, Mr. Flowers, we've already agreed to do the bleachers at Eastern Lane.
Yeah, and I wanted to clarify, it appears that you asked the county for $500,000 contingency fund. When I was suggesting that, Mr. Hayes, my suggestion was is that in our budget process that we allocate a million and a half dollars to projects we plan to accomplish and just leave 500 in contingency, because if you budget the whole $2 million, if we're at it then if anything falls out of the air, you have nowhere to put it. And something always falls out.
My goal was there was to get a $500,000 increase in our small county.
I understand, I just want to make sure you understood what.
Yeah.
I feel like in part of.
That's our backup plan.
In our accounting method, you know, I've raised questions about how, how we're doing that, how we're accounting for it. And I still do, and I like for us to get as far as the board goes on a level keel about so that when we go out and we say we're going to do a project and it's funded, that that project is done and it's funded at some point in time. And if things have been fallen off of that list, that have been sort of promised. And that's, that's not the way, that seemed not the good way to go forward.
But as far as Mr. Henderson, I'll put a letter together to the county manager if I get around everybody here. There's a follow-up to this meeting if we are asking the teacher supplement speeches that are a little higher rate.
Okay, the other thing I would like to just throw out to the board has been served on the facilities committee this past year. We are seeing more and more big ticket items come through for capital outlay projects. I think it is time that we do a comprehensive approach to our facility needs and begin to lobby and advocate for some kind of bond issue within the next couple of years to help us. Because if we keep getting in bids for $600,000 for root, that tears all of our, our small capital outlay money out the window. So we have got to begin to progressively advocate.
How long has it been, how long has it been $2 million? When I got on the board, it was $2 million, and that's been almost eight years, seven and a half years ago. And look, look how much the price of things has increased in that amount of time. And you've been on the board. So it's been back for 15 years or something like that. It's been $2 million for 15 years. I mean, how much has a pickup truck gone up in the last 15 years? You're doubled.
But, but at the same time, even though everything has gone up, our funding sources have gone down from our county.
And if you heard me say at our meeting at Southern Wayne, I'm more than happy to get out there and blame me for asking for a bond.
Yeah, and when they go, when they go in the newspaper and they blame a tax increase on Board of Education, I said, well, there it is. I mean, it's okay.
Well, you see how they're positioning everything right now as it relates to their budget increase? Their budget increases they want to throw back on the county, saying it's because of the school system that they're having to do the increase. So if they want to blame us, then they need to blame us for stuff that we're really asking for.
Well, and I mean, the bottom line is, as I see it, Mr. Henderson, the schools have been underfunded for a generation. So, you know, we're having to catch up. And I mean, you know, this board is really trying to help us. Dr. Dunsmore, on these small projects like this, and we use the one, the bleachers at Eastern Lane as an example, because I just had a number right here in front of me. If the county, and this has always been a mystery to me, how and why we do it like this. But I had a bid here on that job. And I hope, I don't want to speak prematurely, but anyway, it's like $143,000. But the sales tax on that is $6,700. But the county could do that. The county could order that and pay for it in their tax exempt.
But it's going to have to roll through. So if they approve that, help me out here, Michael, if they approve that and the purchase goes through them, that's why I have it on that list. But we're not taxed.
We're not. So if we do it, we have to pay the sales tax.
Well, I know, I know, that's what I'm trying to make. If it's a line item on theirs to do it, could they do it and be taxed? I mean, it's crazy. I mean, what, it's kind of taking money out of one. And I've asked that question the whole time I've been on the board, but it is what it is. Like paving contracts, the county's obviously got paving to be done to it.
They entered in a multi-year project last year.
The question is, is could we, could they do some of those projects?
Yeah.
Which makes me think, when they've done that in the past and has built those schools, we have to title them over to the county. Wouldn't we have to title the bleachers to the county?
I think they're on the title, they're paid, the notes paid, and then they sign it back to us.
Yeah, that's, they're titled over. Sometimes the county needs it to show, depending on their borrowing situation, they might need ownership. But also the sales tax, you know, the refund of tax, as long as they own it, or I think a long-term lease works as well, they get it. And then by the time construction is done, it's re-deed and re-titled back.
So then there's a question, would we have to pay rent to the county for the bleachers that are sitting on the school?
It's a cost. Yeah, usually one dollar, one dollar a year or something like that. Those are just, it's, a lot of times it's recognized as in everybody's interest. But it has to be tied down clearly that it's Board of Education property, remains Board of Education control during that whole time. And we'll come back to the board.
And Pat, just for a form of reference as we talk about reference and things like this, I looked back over our budgets for the past three years. One of the things I found very interesting was that 2015, 28% of our budget was contributed by the county. Today, 14.7. So you can see the reductions that the county has made in giving to us as a progressive school system.
Of course, my question to counter that, is that reductions in what they're giving us or have they increased what they're giving everybody else?
All I can tell you is what our books, our books is, is they have reduced our.
It still has reduced us, no matter who they have been giving it to.
Not necessarily.
Well, what are?
If you're saying it's a percentage of what they're giving, that doesn't necessarily mean they reduced what they're giving us, unless they're over all budgets coming down. That's what I was.
No, I'm saying percentage of our, our.
Yeah, he said it went from 28 to 14.
Gotcha, I'm gonna get it.
The only other thing, Mr. Henderson, as I said, I would get a letter together. My suggestion is that we can put something together, that we do a, just a referendum here within our board asking for that, and we can make it official action moving forward.
Okay, the other action, I think, that the board needs to be made aware of is with the Southern Wayne project. I think there's some issues out there for us.
That's on my list.
And I would like to.
Is that?
Go ahead.
I was going to ask, is that on the agenda somewhere?
No, I.
It's just my summary, I will.
It's just budget consideration that I think we need to be aware of, and this is what I wanted to bring up, that when they passed the referendum bond, they allocated the money at $3.2 million. Two million of that was to go to the Southern Wayne gym project. And a 1.2 was to go towards the classroom. What we are experiencing from our discussions is that it's going to take in well excess of $2 million to do that gymnasium. So one of the things I would hope that Dr. Dunsmore and this board would agree to is that go ask the commissioners if they would relieve us of having that 1.2 set aside for classrooms and allow us to utilize that money to go in our pot of monies for the gymnasium.
We just have it together. I'll send it out to the members electronically. Thank you, Mr. Henderson, for summarizing that. What we looked at was the ACOG and Rosewood Gym Projects of 2001. ACOG square footage is within about 100 square feet of what the proposal was picked at Southern Wayne. The square foot cost, when that was built, we had put the square foot cost of today. It's within $100 of what that gym would have cost if we would build the ACOG gym today. So we're, that's, in my mind, is unbelievable how accurate those numbers are that we have been providing.
Let me share something with you, especially the facilities committee. I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but there's a group in the United States, LMC, they're a forest product buying group. There's some 1,400 of them throughout the United States, and they pretty much control the price of a finished lumber product, a two by four, two by 10, or whatever. We just got an email, they sent it out to all their distributors. They're the ones that distribute the wood products to the supplier, like those who build it or whatever. They sent out an email, May 1st, to all their suppliers that there is, quote, the potential. And anytime they do that, we've always had increases ever since gas prices started affecting everything in the building industry. We've always had increases of 8%, 9%, 12% or whatever. They sent a memo out that effective June 1st, the potential for raw wood product increase at the building supply houses are 119% across the board. So in other words, any of these building projects we got, we got a two by four that costs $2 a day, it's going to cost $5. They say the potential, and their potential has always been reality. Hopefully, it's not going to be 119% because that's, it should be against the law. And I'm just going to tell you, if that happens, even a 25% increase is going to affect what we're doing. But if it's anything greater than what it normally is, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board for some of these projects that we've already got established and bid out because it's going to, the product and material cost is going to go through. I just want to share that.
Dr. Dunsmore, were you just saying that for us to build the gym lane at Southern Wayne, we could do it for basically certain topics we did?
No, what was brought up at that meeting was the ACOG and Rosewood Gym Projects were approved, and there wasn't attachments of classrooms. So what we did was took the actual square footage, the cost of everything to build those gyms, and put today's numbers in it. And we were within $100 of what they're estimating if we go out to bid on the Southern Wayne gym.
I got you, because I know both of those problems, it wasn't the year before I came on the board, but I know they got a whole lot better dealable because it does.
Yes, sir. And the last thing that I shared for the board, just something to look at and consider. I would like to put it on the agenda for the regular board meeting. For safety and security purposes, this firm, they're the leader right now. They're doing a lot of work here in Eastern and North Carolina. They come in and they, you can read through the first few pages. They digitally map every square inch of our buildings, with the exception of closets or places they can't get the cameras in. And they put all. And they put all that on a CAD program that we would save and house, with a purpose above and beyond that. The first year of the outlay is ninety-six thousand dollars to do all that work, and then each year to maintain and update the call system that's with that. So if I'm a teacher in a room, and there's a fight, or a student passes out, I can hit my emergency button, it'll light up. It'll monitor, and the sheriffs, the Goldsboro PD, the fire EMT, everybody would have access to that. I think as most of you know, we have knockboxes at the buildings that fire and safety have keys to, but that knockbox could be for out of district hours. On one side of the building, there could be a fire on the other side. Or if it's something where we have EMT coming rather than going to the front office, waiting to get escorted where they could go directly to that area. It's one of those things where seconds count. Right now, this is something, since we don't have blueprints even for all of our buildings, particularly our older buildings. So this is something that my recommendation is that we go ahead and get started with, if we can get that in place for the opening of the school year. It would include panic buttons for all staff. It would, it's all cellular data driven, so it's not tied into anything. It would be tied into all of our alarm systems. It includes all calls. It's a pretty impressive system to the point, once we have swipe cards, if a student, or if we had some other issue, you could activate and open a lock door specifically for the EMTs coming and go right to the scene. So with our open canvases and all our open buildings, and there was a case last year, I believe it was in New Hanover, they have hardwired panic buttons in all the classrooms. Somewhere, because here's the man over there, lady wants to look. The teacher, there was a fight, the panic button was at her desk, she was on the other side of the room. And she couldn't get to the panic button, and some folks got hurt as a result of that, where this would be the panic buttons with the person. So this is just something for y'all to review. I've reached out to some of the other companies to get cost analysis, so we have some comparisons.
My question is, this is obviously a security piece. So how would it be funded to pay ninety-six thousand?
I would, this would come out of that two million dollars. Or we would use our fund balance.
Okay, well, that's the kind of discussion that I've never felt like that myself, or board had clarity on. Okay, there's no contingency fund in the fund balance, so if you take ninety-six, or not in the fund balance, but in the two billion dollar capital outlay, it's on there. So since there's no contingency fund, the ninety-six thousand dollars and everything that's been allocated in that fund already. So there's never been any clarity about what was really going on with that fund as far as the board. And that's what I would like to see, and other board members, y'all can help me out with this anytime you want to, but you can't spend ninety-six thousand dollars of money that's already allocated to a project without something not getting done.
That's what I'm saying. Every year, we keep having stuff that's been allocated getting knocked off to the next year, and then to the next year. Would that cause us to do that? My other question would be, have we got the bids from the, because I read through all of this after the finance meeting today. And it just comes off the question, and we look at what some of the other.
Yeah, I've reached out and asked for comparisons.
And in response to your question, Rick, too, I think one of the things that we have, on the Facilities Committee, has constantly been asking for is a prioritization of how we spend our capital, our small capital outlay project money. And also inclusive in that would be, if something was on the list this year and it did not get funded, what, where does it, where would it fall as far as priority is concerned next year? Yeah, so that the schools could eventually realize that whatever they have requested, at some point they're going to get it. But from the way things have happened in the past, things get thrown away.
Dr. Dunsmore, looking at the current thing that Mr. Hayes gave us, for the two million dollar outlay preparation. Okay, the first two numbers are seventy and twenty-five thousand, that's ninety-five thousand dollars. So if this is something that we approve, and but, then, you know, somebody needs to go tell CBA thought that we're not going to put an air conditioner in the shop, and we're not going to put a walkway up there if we're going to do this security work right here. Or it needs to come out of fund balance. Do you understand, Mr. Hayes?
And I think that those are the kinds of discussions that we as a Facilities Committee need to have.
To be completely honest with you, Mr. Hayes, this is bookkeeping one oh one. And I do bookkeeping. So I've asked for this and asked for this. We need to know what you didn't spend last year. We need accurate accounting on that two million dollars, and it doesn't need to be every year, just two million dollars go there and everything in the past disappeared. Because I know you didn't spend two million dollars out of that fund last year, because it was four hundred fifty thousand dollars allocated to two projects, to two weight rooms. At CBA, I mean, at Rosewood and Spring Creek. Now, am I making myself clear? I would like to say, I'm asking you, here in front of all of our other board members, that you give us a ledger showing what you spent last year, and how it was spent, and how it was appropriated, what fell out of it, and that number that fell out of it needs to move forward into this year, not just come back here with two million dollars. And every bit of it would be allocated, and then there's a ninety-six thousand dollar request for something else that's falling out in the air, and there's nowhere to put it.
I would be more than happy to give that.
Let me clarify something, though. In the last, last meeting that we had, they did present us with an update that basically told us that they had twenty-two point seven million dollars available in seventeen eighteen. They spent one point nine, and it is projected that we would have about seven hundred thirty-six thousand dollars that would be turned over to fund balance this year. Is that accurate?
Well, actually, yeah, I'd worked on that, and that would be what we're projecting would be left based on the information we had at that time, yes.
Okay, and how does it appear to be fleshing out now? Are we coming, have we done some more projects that we had originally touted in this proposal that would go to next year?
I will, I'll just need updated, because, you know, there, I don't know if the air conditioning piece that we had to cover, of those gyms, was actually included in that one. So I just need to go through it and look and see what we all had with the spending and everything.
Well, does that money fall out into fund balance, or does it roll back into small caps?
The, we get the money from the county based on what we do, so if we don't do a project, we don't get the funding. So it remains there as a carryover amount. So they don't just give us two million or two point seven spent. We get the reimbursement based upon what we do. You got to present invoices, and then they pay us back.
Okay, so when they pay us back, let's say we don't use all of the two million. Is that balance added to an additional two million for the next year? Or does it just go in the pot and becomes a part of that two million the next year?
No, they give us a, what they have to do is give us two million dollar allotment for the current year, and anything unspent is carried.
So it's carryover to them or to you, to us?
All got to other.
And that's how we put the roof on Spring Creek High School and the Owen Academy Building's carryover money from three years ago. I came here, there was a large carryover.
But if there's carryover money, then why are we not doing all of the projects that we're supposed to be doing?
Well, sometimes there are emergencies that come up that we're not foreseeing, and, you know, that money, you know, has to flow into what we either have carried over or allotted. Some of these situations, some are for that.
Mr. Hayes, in no kind of way, and Dr. Dunsmore, in no kind of way, am I trying to hamstring you in this whole process. That's why I suggested that up to two million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars go into contingency. If we got five hundred thousand dollars in contingency, and a worthy ninety-six thousand dollar project comes up, like the one that the superintendent is presenting today, we have somewhere to account for that. Okay? And if we go over to five hundred thousand dollars that's in contingency, then it needs to come out of our fund balance, and that needs to be made clear to the Board of Education, that in order to fund a project is having to come out of fund balance. But I could see how it would be real easy for the Board of Education to allocate and fund a project that they felt like was worthy, but the administration feel like they want to do a different project. And so you just don't do one, so you can do the other. I'm trying to get some clarity as a board member about that two million dollars, and what we're doing with it every year, and the roll over. And it's just bookkeeping one oh one, and I'm asking you to get us some clarity.
As I said, I won't have that information either at the Facilities Meeting or.
At Facilities Meeting will be one of them, and we'll discuss it.
Mr. Salmons, I have been on the Facilities Committee in a few years, but, you know, the way I see it, too, not being on the Facilities Committee, and I don't know what the process is now with the Facilities Committee, but I know at one time principals were asked to give me your top five priorities.
It's called a wish list?
Yeah, a wish list, the top five priorities, and then that guy ends up going, in many cases, on this list here. And, but then, if you're doing other projects and you pull it off, I mean, we got some principals that requested the same thing for three or four years at a time. And you kind of get to the point that, well, I requested it three years, but then other people, other principals are getting everything on their wish list done, you know.
Well, that's definitely how we feel in the southern end of the campus.
May I make this comment, please? Because I thought it was discussed at one time, that we were going to look at, or look into establishing a procedure, so that if you have an item on the list, and you didn't get to it the year that it was placed there, that the second year, it would carry weight.
We have asked for that information, and we've done that twice in Facilities Committee, and we have not yet received that information.
Okay, so who does that information come from?
Dr. Dunsmore.
All right, Dr. Dunsmore. I guess it would come from Dr. Dunsmore and finance, wouldn't it? They got to set up a priority system, so that if you don't, those jobs that you don't get done this year, and they are the same things that the principals are asking for next year, they carry weight, so that sooner or later, you're going to get to those.
That's what we're trying to create, putting a system in place that would guarantee these principals that their request does not go unheard of.
Well, does that have to come to the superintendent, come from the superintendent? I mean, can't the Facilities Committee sitting down with the finance officer develop that plan? I mean, Dr. Dunsmore can be in there. I'm not trying to take any responsibility from you, but I don't know if just one person.
No.
You need some input.
It should be a committed action. What we have relied on is the leadership team to bring us the recommendation, and we as a Facilities Committee, look at those recommendations, and then we bless them, or we say, no, this is what we think, and send it back to them before it comes to the full board.
I had an impromptu meeting, I come up here the other day, and just happened to catch Mr. Salmons and Dr. Harold, and we talked for a time. And the principals do give their wish list. And I encouraged Dr. Hock, Dr. Harold, and the administration to consider the wish list. But the administration needs to go out to the individual schools and see what are the real needs, are you got a wish list, and you got a real need? You correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hock, Mr. Salmons, and those things that are real needs are like, as you said, a category of how that we actually do them, like a safety issue would sort of rise to the top, and things like that. But I think all this starts, Mr. Hayes, with a more clear accounting of that money, and so that the board knows, so when the board decides that they are going to fund and approve a project, that the board can feel comfortable that that project is going to be completed.
As we, Mr. Hayes, I don't have the minutes in front of me, but at our last finance meeting, did we discuss the wish list that the teachers? We have already gone and discussed that in finance, like, with, Mr. Hayes, do you remember? Because we said that some of the list and some of the items that we were getting from some of the principals, maybe we needed to go out to the buildings and walk through and help them prepare that list, as to whether it's a need or a want. We've already discussed that. So we were hoping that when we get our next list from the principals, with some input from some people in the administration, it won't come in with such a large number of things that really, I'm not going to say are way out of the realm of asking for, but they are more pertinent than they are relevant in actual needs instead of what it wants. So I think we've already discussed that at finance.
Okay. At this time, can we move to the local budget?
Just one last, one last thing before we leave. Before we ask to vote on this ninety-six thousand dollars, I would like to have a clear detail about where it's going to be paid.
And lastly, before Dr. Lewis will be going to go over, earlier I was student numbers that he had passed out, and then I'll be quiet, because I know people want to move along. I just want to, since I haven't had the chance, thank the board for the extension on my contract, if that's what you want, so thank you very much.
I gave each of you a hard copy at your seats of the same document that's posted in Board Docs. I'm thinking it might be a little easier to read on paper. Earlier this spring, the board voted to try to assist the elementary schools that are on the low-performing schools list by going ahead and staffing them with the reduced class sizes that are going to be phased in by the state over the next four years anyway. I know that there was some discussion at a board meeting after that about what the impact would be from a cost perspective. We know that, for example, these additional teachers would have to come really from one of two things. We would either have to raise class sizes in the upper grades to free up teachers to go and help out in what you've approved, or we would have to have some other funding source like fund balance or something to pay the additional salaries that would come with these extra positions. After the discussion that I think Dr. Dunsmore led at a March Board of Education meeting, the board sort of asked that we come back and say, well, what are our options? I think that several of the board members had said, well, if you don't feel like we can do all of it at these five schools, what can we do? All right? So what I've tried to prepare for you today is sort of what it might look like if we tried to phase in the assistance for the low-performing elementary schools. You know, what would happen if we tried to stay one year ahead of what the state is doing? What would be to stay two years ahead of what the state is doing? And then finally, the last chart is what it would take to go ahead and be three years ahead of the state, which is what the board has already voted to do, and what we will do unless any further action is taken. So the short version is that, you know, you really have four options here. One, of course, is to back off and say, we're just going to phase in at the low-performing elementary schools the same way we're going to phase in at every other elementary school. That's table number one, and that would not require any teachers more than what the state is already going to provide us. If the board wanted to say, well, let's try to get a year ahead of that formula, and let's go ahead and reduce by one year's worth of class size reduction at the five low-performing elementary schools, then I am projecting that that would require nine additional teachers in addition to what the state will give us. If we tried to stay two years ahead of the state curve for the class size reductions, we could do that with twelve additional teachers. And then finally, to do what you have already voted for us to do, we're still on that twenty-three teachers that was discussed with this presentation was made back in March. So I bring that to you for informational purposes only, because we had been asked and said, well, if you don't feel like we can do all of this, what can we do? Well, here's some sort of step-by-steps of what we can do.
Just if I could jump in here, because we've been getting the planning allotments from the state, and I have to give Mr. Hayes credit for this, the state is rolling out funding for this over four years. Next year was a whole harm, so we're getting one quarter of the money primarily for specials, art, music, those types of features, to start funding them. I think, Mr. Hayes, help me out, that most of your colleagues, and I can assure you, all the superintendents were not planning on using that money other than for other things. They weren't gonna change their class sizes next year. So I think we could move their four-year plan up by a year and actually be in the second year of this and basically cost us nothing. And that would be, that would put us a year in front of where we needed to be in essentially looking at our planning allotments for the number of teachers we'll be having next year. And we try to sit on some of those in reserve because we don't know moving forward where we're gonna have to shift until all the enrollments are done. And I might add, with our moratorium on transfers, we're starting to see a huge impact on that. A real example's gonna be at East Shremwayne High School, I think they're gonna be down a hundred and...
About 135 students.
I said 140, which is gonna apply to about five teaching positions that are gonna be probably pulled from East Shremwayne. So that's students that are rising ninth graders that were out of district that are gonna be going back to their home schools. So I think with some of the shifting moving forward, we can certainly lower the class sizes. I think the second year was by one, the third year was by one, and the fourth year was by two, and it would not cost us any additional funds.
So you said table two would actually be a zero instead of 612,000?
Yeah, because when this was put together, I think that was before the planning allotment had come through.
Yeah, these planning allotments are like in the last two weeks, so we're just now starting to get those hammered down and put our numbers into the formulas and seeing where we're at.
Okay, may I ask this question, please?
Sure.
And thank you very much for this. We knew that when you gave us the first information, that Brogdon Primary and Spring Creek Elementary did not have the classrooms, and we know that we cannot build, okay? So is there anything that we can do there to enhance their situation? I know you said, like, Brogdon Primary required three teachers, Spring Creek, three. Can we do something in that building that would allow them to do that? Because I haven't been to Spring Creek during a school day, but I can tell you that Brogdon Primary is overcrowded.
It is very much so.
It is very much overcrowded. And the building needs to be torn down and rebuilt, but we won't even get into that discussion right now because kids are going through, having to go through one and two classrooms just to get to a bathroom. It's bad. But on top of that, it is still overcrowded.
Yeah, at Brogdon Primary School, when we were first researching this and I taught with the principal there, the six, at the time, we thought it would take six additional spaces, and she sort of listed them for me, the art room, the music room, perhaps converting a computer lab into a classroom. And so if that number became three instead of six, well, then, you know, she would not have to do all that she was afraid she might have to do. She's still gonna have to give up something.
Does she have to give up art and music? Because I don't wanna go up to another year, I hope everybody agrees with me, with concerns over art and music.
I would leave that to the principal to decide how the best position teachers in her building.
She doesn't wanna do that, so I don't...
Well, I don't think any other smaller two. Now, the other option that you have is what we, you know, had to use for a lot of the year at Tommy's Road, and that's co-teaching. You know, whether that's good or bad, I don't know. I've not done it, so I don't hear good things about it. What I hear is it's an awful lot of children in one room.
Well, can you ask, can you find out what she can do so that, because that is a part of the puzzle. We need to know what space they're gonna use because that will let us know what costs we're gonna get and what concerns are gonna be out there. And, you know, some of them might be legitimate concerns, but they might not overweight or outweigh reducing those class sizes.
Right. Depending on, I'll continue to use Brogdon Primary for the example, okay? If she were to say, choose to convert two existing computer labs into traditional classrooms, well, then the district would, I would assume, bear the expense of providing her mobile computer labs that could be wheeled room to room. So would it help out from a facility standpoint? Yes, but we need to be ready to bear the cost of two computer parts.
And we need to know that because that is a part of the total cost.
Yeah, so that's a consideration, absolutely. The other thing that I would say, sort of a disclaimer to what I'm giving you, the wild card in terms of the number of classrooms is kindergarten enrollment. We have had kindergarten pre-registration, and those numbers were relatively strong, but parents are not required to pre-register. And so, for example, this past year of the teachers that we had to shift around or change, a lot of what we had to do at the beginning of the year this year was because our kindergarten enrollment was larger than expected. So what we try to do is predict as best we can how many kindergarteners we think are coming to us based on what the past tells us we should expect. Could be a little higher, could be a little lower. So what you're seeing there, the numbers of nine, 12, and 23 could end up being seven, 10, and 21, or it could end up being 11, 15, and 25. You know, it just depends on the kindergarteners as they come in. The rest of it, first, second, and third grade, we can predict pretty well. The reason we bring this up today is it is the time of year where our principals expect us to send them their initial teacher allotments, okay? Board action, as it was taken in February, requires us to do the 23, okay? And so in the absence of any further action, we will send out their allotments as if, you know, we are going full forward with what the Board has instructed us to do, and we will need a decision about how to fund the additional positions, whether we wanna do that through fund ballots or whether we wanna do that through increased class sizes in grades four through eight. Right now, this current school year, our average class size district-wide in four through eight is 26 students. We would need to move that to an average of 28 students in order to absorb the additional positions without taking money from anywhere else, okay?
Okay, so what would you do at level two?
I think, you're talking about the second, the nine on here?
Yes.
I think what Dr. Dunsmore said earlier about perhaps having some positions that are being given to us through this preliminary allotment that Mr. Hayes has seen, we might still be able to allot 26 there.
26 what?
Four through eight.
Four through eight.
Lead him on.
Yeah, we're hoping, so those additional allotments that are for your roll-out, take over art, music, PE, they're giving us one quarter of that number. So we're just gonna use that and go ahead and start lowering our class sizes at these schools, and then as the funding catches up the next three years, it's not gonna cost us.
So I know that at a work session, I'm not sure you're allowed to take any action today, you may not be prepared to. The next Board meeting is May the 29th, and we typically send out the initial allotments to the principals the last week in May. So I suppose what I need to do, unless I hear otherwise from the group between now and then, is hold off on initial allotments until after the May Board meeting. Bring it up with you again, get clarification on which way you wanna go, and I'll be ready to roll either way so that they can go out the next day.
And when you do that, I would like to, as best you can, that you have, that we know what the teachers might lose. That might not be in your report, but it might be something that you give to us in terms of a school. What they would, yeah, what rooms.
We can talk.
And then, and then, and then I would like to know, if we do level two, that the impact, four through eight?
I can go ahead and tell you, I don't think for, if we do the table two, I don't think there would be any impact in four through eight.
Okay.
I don't think there'll be any.
All right. Is anyone looking at level three? I went to level two because, to me, the money would, we wouldn't have to spend any of our money. That would cover it. It will not cover level three, I would assume.
No, I think that what we will probably be able to get by with theirs, instead of a district average in four through eight, 26, we could probably go to 27.
Well, level two or three?
Three, three.
Okay.
And again, you know...
I don't wanna overcry level of four through eight.
When we were having that discussion, or when the discussion was being had when Dr. Dunsmore presented this at the March Board meeting, I think the question that came up was, well, if you're saying that you don't think we can do this, what can we do?
Yes.
And I think that's what we've tried to devise.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I thank you for the work that you did.
Let me ask you a question, because there was some talk several months back about the latest legislature may go through some further grades of four, five, six, that that might be the next monkey on the table. If that's correct, and they've allowed four years to implement the K3, will we have some overlay? Will we be doing four, five, and six two years from now or whatever? Has there been any comment about that?
I have not read anything. I think that we are getting a little bit of a hint at what they must be looking at though because, and Mr. Hayes, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the enhancement teacher ratio they're gonna use is for grades K through five, not K through three, okay? And so the way I read that is, they're gonna understand, like, I'll give you an example. At sixth grade, they're gonna allot us teachers at a ratio of one teacher for every 24 kids. We're gonna allot out at 26 because they know we still don't get funding for enhancement teachers at the middle grades, okay? And right now, we barely get a little bit for upper elementary, okay? So in the absence of them changing their formulas for how they fund enhancement teachers, if they don't take that beyond K5, then I think it's reasonable to think that they figure we're gonna continue to do what we do to get our enhancement teachers in the upper grades, you know? So a signal might be if they start talking about providing additional funding for enhancement teachers beyond grade five, then I think we start to read between the lines and say, okay, they're gonna expect lower class sizes at middle school as well.
Discussions at my level is, I think they're waiting to see what we do these first year or two before they start making any changes. And I think if we're showing fidelity with what we're doing, at least Wayne Academy's taken that money and taken steps to get out and fund it.
Well, I just don't want us to be caught up in the year four. Like, we thought we were gonna be caught this year. Because it would be virtually impossible for us to be, that's why I said all along, we need to be trying to implement a little something all along so that when we get to that fourth year, we will be, we will be ahead of the ball. Plus, we have the opportunity to have higher test scores and everything else. And that's amazing, the children, too.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Are we ready to move forward with the security contract district-wide? Is that...
That's what I, I'm trying to get everything out. That's to review that and get the additional comparisons here for the Board meeting.
Okay. They didn't include comments, but are there any comments?
Mr. Lewis, thank you for putting that information together. It's very, very important.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman. This may or may not be the time to bring this up, but I think maybe it is. Dr. Lewis, I asked him earlier in the week to give me some numbers together on our current enrollment and current capacity, and I think it went out to all the Board members. And Dr. Lewis, looking at your projected numbers, it shows a shortfall in the whole system in elementary schools that we're short 610 elementary classrooms as we speak. I'm looking at the projected one...
The projected, yes, sir.
For 2018, 19...
I'm there, yes, sir.
2018, 19 school year.
We're into 17, 18.
Well, now...
We're short 600 classrooms?
Hang on.
Yes, I don't think you're being polite.
In the little introductory paragraph, as I'm trying to...
Student enrollment, not classroom, not 600, not classroom, I'm sorry.
Yes. Remember that what I've started doing, because we know that House Bill 9, because we know class size reduction is coming, I have started using elementary's future capacity in the work that I'm trying to do for Student Assignment Committee. As we're talking about potentially moving lines or changing figure patterns or whatever it is we're gonna need to do, I am projecting out now and using the capacity that that elementary school is gonna be able to hold when the class sizes are fully implemented so that we can kind of future-proof whatever we do a little bit. So, yes, by those standards, we're gonna show an elementary capacity at like 108, about 108% next year, assuming that kindergarten comes in about like it normally does.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna be short 610 seats for students. We're currently, the current numbers as of October this year, this school year, because that's October 17, we were 560 seats short. So I've heard conversation, and of course, the Board has never made a decision on this, but I've heard conversation of repurposing Wayne Academy to a middle school. We're using these same formulas to project in middle school is that we will have, with the classes that we have, we will have a surplus of 76 seats with what we currently have. So having said that, the need is in elementary classroom space plus the fact that these, we're gonna have to have more classrooms to meet these standards. So in our long-range planning, Dr. Dunsmore, Wayne Academy, perhaps the former Edgewood, I don't know if that facility will come up to standards for elementary school, but we need elementary seating. Now, I know there's been conversation about building a new elementary school, but we don't have that currently, but we do have Wayne Academy. Wayne Academy, I think, was the reason we built to be a middle school. I don't know how much shuffling has got to be done, and if we make it a middle school, you need to pull down some kind of way in the planning. It seems like if in fact we do make it a middle school, we need to pull down some other schools some kind of way to give us elementary seating space. And I don't know if you can do that. The simple thing to do in a simplistic world would be make Wayne Academy elementary space. Logistically, I don't know how that would work out.
I don't think it would work out at all because all of our needs are being shown in the southeastern part of the county.
Yeah, and I'm just throwing these numbers out there. I'm not saying I have an answer. I'm just saying as I see it, we're focused on making Wayne Academy a middle school, and we need elementary space. So, of course, Meadow Lane's gonna come online, but these numbers are reflecting Meadow Lane.
No, this number does not reflect the new capacity at Meadow Lane because it's not available.
Your projected numbers don't?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
Well, anyway, like I said, it's obviously moving toward it, but Meadow Lane's not gonna give us 610 seats.
Well, I have done it both ways, though, I'll say that. Meadow Lane, the additional seats we're gonna have at Meadow Lane, instead of being at 108% capacity at the elementary, we would be at 106, so still well over the additional seat, the 150 or so extra seats that that Meadow Lane is gonna give us helps, but doesn't solve it. The projects that are on the books for expanding Northwest and potentially Fremont, which I know there's been a lot of discussion about Fremont and whether or not it can even be done, might help us by another 1% or 2%. It depends on the approach we take with the Northwest project. Originally, that Northwest Elementary School project was supposed to replace mobile units, and if we treat it that way, then the capacity really doesn't go up any, it just changes out from trailers to brick and mortar. If we use it to truly increase capacity, then that's a different story. But in what I'm looking at for the Student Assignment Committee projecting out towards 2019, 20, I am including that extra space in some of what I'm doing.
And the Student Assignment Committee is...
Mr. Smith, Mr. Henderson, and Mr. Pritchard.
Well, gentlemen, I encourage you, I mean, you're... There's my comments.
I'd like to make some comments as well. I agree with us that we really need to begin to look at some of our long-range planning because I noticed that I looked back at our Facility Needs Survey, our Facility Needs Survey in 2015. needs survey in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and one of the things that I found very interesting was that there was a proposal for Northern, Northern Wayne School, which I assume these mobile units that we're doing for Thomas Road, for Northeast and Fremont is supposed to take the place of that new school?
That was the idea.
That was on the original, when they built the two new middle schools, that was added on that, that was on that original plan, and it was cut.
That, back in fifteen, sixteen, the facility needs survey you're talking about is done every five years by DPI, so it was done with the old class size requirements in mind. Since then, they've upped them, and so that's changed, I think, how we're looking at elementary space now. The original idea was to go ahead and build another school in that area to take heat off of Northwest, which could then take heat off of, you know, you could ship Northeast over to Fremont, Fremont, you still...
Right.
That, that was the idea, but with the new class size mandates, I think that we saw that even that wasn't gonna be enough. Plus, when we looked at some of that long-range growth data and started meeting with Chip Crumpler and his folks and saw that the bigger growth was really in southeastern Wayne County, the perception was that it, that most of it was in the northern end, and while there is significant growth projected in the northern end, the bigger growth is expected in the southeast, down around, you know, between Spring Creek and Brogdon area.
Right, which leads, leads me to say that we really need to be re-studying these, because it also, in that plan, was calling for a new Rosewood Middle School. And I, I see much greater need for a new Mount Olive Middle School than I do for a Rosewood Middle School.
And how do you, how do you come up with the idea that we need middle school space?
It was not, it was not additional space, it was replacement space for eighteen buildings.
I'm not sure when Mount Olive was built, Rosewood was built, Rosewood was built in the twenties.
Well, it's, I mean, we've visited it, it's pretty old and beat up, you know?
I wanna say both of those projects fell in years six through ten.
No, they were in the zero through five. The only, the only thing that was in the six through ten was renovation for Brogdon Primary School and a couple other schools.
Well, speaking about the northern end and North, and Northeast and Northwest and Fremont, Fremont has got a current capacity of three hundred and eight, that's the capacity. Northeast is five fifty-nine, and Northwest Elementary. I've always felt like there needs to be a balance up there, and at Fremont, some kind of way, the capacity of that school needs to be pushed up some by two hundred and fifty, three hundred students, and that would balance that area out pretty okay, I think.
That, that was where the idea of expanding that school by twelve classrooms or so, that the problem you run into with Fremont, a school that size, is that the, you know, you're exact, it's not a normal-sized elementary school, it's too small for what we're trying to use it for.
And you gotta have, you know, you administrate that, and, and it's a small school, a small campus, but when we went to visit it, they had plenty of room there. I mean, they obviously had enough room. It was like night and day there over, over Brogdon Primary. Brogdon Primary was...
I think any school would have been like, like, day over Brogdon Primary.
I'm trying to tell you, y'all, you see what we've done to our southern end of the county and reprieve that.
Oh, let's, let's put that on tape a second time.
We've, we've already started conversations with Mount Olive University regarding that middle school project, some encouragement there, and I'm not sure if I may, I don't have any comments, but I just wanted to let the board know there was another shooting in Texas, and if we were to keep your thoughts and prayers with those folks in our boroughs in Texas.
If Meadow Lane has...
Can you give us any more information than that?
Towns, municipalities, and...
Ten.
Mom making...
Reports were nine students and one teacher, and they also found closed addresses.
They got a teenager in custody in that second...
If Meadow Lane has additional space after construction, is there, is there a plan to pull down on Spring Creek? And Spring Creek, Georgia, it is so big, but logistically anyway, and maybe some kind of way as a spin-off of that, give some to Brogdon Primary?
Not give some, you need to take some from Brogdon Primary.
You understand where I'm going.
Right, right.
That's one of the, that's one of the things I'm prepared to take student advisory is, how best to use this additional space? Do you pull in a few from Spring Creek, a few from Brogdon Primary? I'll be honest with you, the school that I'm really watching as kindergarten gets up and running is North Drive. Because North Drive had an unusually large number of kindergartners last year. Even when you factor in who should have been going there because of their residency all along, even when you take all of that out-of-district transfer stuff out of play and compare apples to apples, last year's kindergarten class at North Drive was huge. I don't know if that was just one of those things where every once in a while it has big class, or if it's the beginnings of a trend. If it's the beginnings of a trend, then that may cause us to rethink how we wanna use that space. We're gonna, we'll have a lot of decisions to make.
Well, Mr. Henderson, any committee, we can do this thing, but it's gonna be a journey, but you gotta take it one step at a time.
That's exactly right, and, and that's one of the things I keep saying about total redistricting, and my concept of redistricting would take a while, because you got to do these little tweaks until we get the facilities up that we actually need to do a total redistricting plan.
It's gonna be an ongoing, a bit of a...
Yeah, and it will be until we get some more facilities.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
I need a second.
I see.
Thank you. Any discussion? No. All in favor, show by raising your right hand.